Hey, I call the meeting on North Syracuse Central School District Board of Education to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Begin with a moment of silence for the following. Stephen Feek, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. John Wheeler, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Christina Smart, an employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Kathleen Labarre, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Okay, we're going to begin. We have a update on our UPK K through four AIS and ELA eight through seven with Mr. Stone. So, Mr. Stone, when you're ready, you can come on up and take the helm.
Now we can turn the lights down a little, right?
All right.
All right. So, good evening, everyone. For those who don't know me, my name is Greg Stone. I'm Director of ELA and Elementary Education here at North Syracuse. I'll be presenting this evening on UPK AIS and our pre-K through 12 ELA, some of the areas that I supervise. So I'm going to start off with UPK or Universal Pre-Kindergarten. As the board is aware, we have partnerships with several off-site locations. That includes Northminster, North Syracuse Early Education Program, Learn as You Grow, two centers at Learn as You Grow, and the YMCA. And so tonight, I'm going to give you a little overview of what's going on in each of those. We have a lot of work going on in UPK, as well as give you an overview of some of the finances and everything that's going on there. And of course, if you have any questions. So, like I said, we partner with local organizations to deliver our UPK programming. They're very much in partnership with us as a district. And we provide a lot of resources, training, and everything else. What's unique to North Syracuse is that we do provide transportation to our students. And that is an excellent way for us to increase our enrollment. The more students we can get into our UPK program, the better off our students are going to be entering kindergarten. And so we're always looking at ways to improve and expand this program. It is available to all North Syracuse students. There are attendance zones, so the attendance zones determine some of the locations. As far as the selection goes, so when people apply, like I said, it's open to any North Syracuse residents, as long as the child is four years old on or before December 1st. When they apply in the spring, we actually have to have a lottery system because usually we have more seats than we do people who are interested. This year, we have filled all of our seats. I think we have a couple of seats left at our Alta Drive site. But we're confident those are going to fill up right here before school starts. That's pretty typical. So we will be most likely operating at full capacity, other than a few extra seats in our half-day program. Most of our programming is all full-day UPK and all these sites. Our Main Street North Syracuse Early Education Program does have some half-day seats that we're able to use, which does fill a need for some of our families. What's really strong about our program and is important, it really exposes our students to an educational setting. So especially coming off of COVID, we know that a lot of our UPK students coming in are missing some really big social skills. And they did not interact with other children as they have in the past in neighborhoods. The UPK program does a huge amount of social skills building. But not only that, there is a huge emphasis on early literacy and numeracy skills, as well as we teach those school routines. Everyone thinks that kindergarten, our students walk in and that really they're starting from ground zero. And yes, we certainly do do that, but there's an expectation in kindergarten for our students to already know how to be in a line, how to walk down the hall, how to be ready to learn. UPK provides a lot of that. So it's a great feeder pattern for our schools in order to help prepare our students to be ready for kindergarten. And I'll talk more about that in a little bit. One of our major goals is alignment of programming. And so I'm going to talk about that in a couple of slides, but I want to go through some of the details with financing and enrollment. So what's interesting here, similar to some other areas. If you look historically back at our funding, if you go before 2021, those numbers pretty much stayed the same for many years. So we had kind of a stagnant area where we really couldn't grow the program. With COVID and additional funding, you can see that we've had a tremendous increase in our funding. Over a million dollars has been increased to our state and federal funding for this program. I'd like to point out, this funding is only for UPK. There's, it's very much earmarked. There's very clear things you can spend it on and can't, and pretty much if it's not UPK, you can't spend on anything else. So we have to work within those guidelines in order to expand this program. But we're in a great situation where our funding has increased dramatically. And we've done everything we can to keep expanding this program and will continue to do so. So in terms of our enrollment, you can see it kind of matches where that increase in funding came from. So we've added over 100 seats in the last two years, which is pretty impressive considering we have limited resources. You've got limited classrooms. Our UPK programs, just like everywhere, are facing a labor shortage. Very difficult to find teachers for these programs. The groups that we work with have done an excellent job of expanding our program and making sure we're doing so within our capacity to do it well. We've increased our sites from four to five by adding North Syracuse Early Education Program to the list. And so we're getting to the point now where we think we're reaching that saturation point for our four-year-olds. We're going to continue to market this, expand it as much as we can. But for the first time ever, our seats are not completely filled. And we've done a great deal of advocating, putting out PR blasts, news articles. And we even did an interview to increase enrollment. So we might be at the point where our local area just doesn't, you know, isn't interested in sending. There's always going to be some students that families just don't want to send them to UPK, and that's okay. So we're going to look at other creative ways to use that funding and try to increase even more students and seats. So coming up for this school year, we have a lot of priorities in UPK. So as the board is aware, in the community, we've done a huge investment in our literacy instruction and program over the last couple of years. First at the K4 level, we're now working on 5'8". We're also working at the UPK level. So we are aligning all of our programs so that the ELA instruction matches what is taught in kindergarten, obviously at a pre-K appropriate level. We're going to be aligning the math instruction, our SEL programs. That's all coming. Right now is going to be a focus on up, or sorry, integrating CKLA into the pre-K setting. So as you're aware, our core ELA program at grades K through four is Core Knowledge Language Arts or CKLA. We are now adding the pre-K version to our UPK sites. What's powerful about this is that it teaches a sounds-first approach, which basically means we're teaching sounds before letters. And so now in UPK, they're going to teach the sounds first, so that when they enter kindergarten, those students will have a strong basis to then build on. It'll be more appropriately aligned with our kindergarten programming. Another big component of this coming school year that is going to be a tremendous help, so we did add a UPK coordinator position. Again, that is funded through all those, the federal and state funding, so it is no cost to the district. What is going to be powerful about adding this position is we have a tremendous amount of challenges in our UPK. I've been working with them for a couple of years now. The behaviors that we're seeing in UPK, the additional special education requirements, just the needs of our students and families has doubled or tripled. And our centers, our directors in our centers are saying, we don't know what to do. We are struggling. We have behavior students that are giving, you know, that exceeded our capacity and just our ability to meet their needs. So this UPK coordinator position is going to be not only coordinating the curriculum side and the professional development, but this person, Kate Tabatis, who just accepted the position, is going to be right there onsite, helping to integrate behavior strategies, helping with classroom management, helping to teach our teachers there how to work with more challenging behaviors. So I think it's a huge win for us. Most importantly, if we can, we can help our students at age four. When they enter our schools, they're going to be that much more ready to learn and be successful in our schools and kindergarten. So that's a big part of what that position is, that Kate will be in the schools five days a week, helping to support curriculum and behavior and social emotional. Okay, so that was UPK. Do you have any questions for me before I dive into some AIS stuff?
I do. Staffing, is that from our people or is that outside people?
Yeah, so when, in the partnership we have with North Syracuse Early Education Program, those are North Syracuse teachers. So we integrate the UPK students in and mix them in with the rest. So that's a tricky program because of the funding there. It's, there's so many regulations with it. So yes, in that regards, the other centers are based, they're hired and covered completely by those centers. So YMCA employs their own, Learner's Group employs their own, and Northminster employs their own.
Well, my goal, I probably won't be around for it, is that someday that this will be all in our school district with our teachers. Because if we have a program K through 12, we should have like ESM at Park Hill when they have it under their umbrella. That's just my goal someday. I won't be here for it, but the funding is going up. The funding has doubled in two years. If that continues, we're going to have some money. So I just think this district, I've told Mr. Balls, needs to look into that. We're looking at demographics now, and we do have space in some of our schools. So, thank you.
Yes, thanks. Any other questions? All right. So I'm going to change gears. We're going to dive into some data. I promise I'm not going to get too deep into the data, but certainly if you'd like me to go further, I'm more than happy to. So I'm going to be talking next about our K4 Academic Intervention Services or AIS. This really focuses, if you're going back to our strategic plan, around that goal around student support systems or a multi-tiered system of support. You all know, I come up here a lot and speak about RTI. We talk a lot about that pyramid, tiers one, two, and three. So for the purpose of this presentation, what we're talking about right now in K4 AIS is really that tier two and tier three. So our AIS teachers work in our schools with small groups of students trying to close learning deficits. So if you're a student who has identified struggling in ELA or math, if you reach a certain point, you're likely going to be working with one of our specialized teachers. And their job is to go to interventions five days a week in both levels to help remediate, close those gaps, and get that student back to in the green in tier one, so that they can succeed there. So we do a lot with data in this area. Some of the things we've been working on for AIS, you're well aware of these first five bullets here. We have implemented a AIMS web screening tool over the last couple of years, so we now have consistency in data. We can look back historically. We have aligned and implemented research-based intervention strategies and programs over the last couple of years. So that's really targeting where that gap is to make sure we have a research-based intervention there. Over the last couple of years, a couple of years, a few years ago, we added some AIS staffing because of those COVID deficits. So that was a way for us to meet a greater need of student that was there and is still there. We've trained all of our AIS teachers in Letters, Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. That is a significant training that they've all been through in early literacy instruction and planning. And we've implemented trimester data meetings, which I think are the most powerful piece. So our teachers, all teachers in our elementary school, meet three times a year with our AIS folks. They go through their assessment data. They look and set goals for every single child that they work with. And that is really starting to start showing us how we can close those gaps. Most importantly, moving forward for this coming school year, we're going to be enhancing what's called our Grow the Green protocols, which really is just a way for us to set goals in that tier one and close those gaps. We are doing a full retraining for our AIS staff this summer on the expectations of the program to make sure that all of our sites are offering a very similar approach, so that our students get a similar experience in all of our schools. And we're spending a lot of time this summer in this coming school year on what we call diagnosis and prescription. So just like when you go to a doctor with an ailment, you want the doctor to diagnose accurately and prescribe accurately, so that you can fix whatever issue might be. It's the same thing in AIS. What we're really working toward is how do we identify when there is a student who's struggling, let's say in ELA? What exactly is the skill deficit? How do we know which one is the right deficit? And how do we apply the correct intervention or prescription in order to close that gap? It sounds simple, but it's really complex when you're talking about early readers. And so we're, we've invested a lot of time and energy in creating a document that's going to help guide our teachers through that to ensure that if a student isn't making growth, that we do something different and that we do it in a researched way. So hopefully, we're going to continually decrease those struggles that students are having and increase them in tier one. So I want to get into a little bit of the data. I am not going to go deep into this data unless you'd like me to. So, but I want to explain it because it's a little complicated. And over the next couple of years, I think there'll be ways to clean this up. But we need to remember, we don't have a lot of historic data with AIMS. So here, what you're looking at in this first screen is K4 Literacy Tier One. So what, basically, we're looking at all of our students in our schools, how they're doing in ELA Tier One. So these numbers are a little concerning, and I'm going to explain why. So if you take a look at kindergarten, if you go back to fall of 21, 17% of our incoming students would be considered in the green or where they should be entering kindergarten. At the end of kindergarten, spring of 22, you can see we've doubled that and grew that 30 to 34%. That, that means our teachers have done a tremendous job really closing that gap, but recognizing our students came in at 17%. What you can see across here, a couple of things to look at. First, if you go kindergarten through fourth grade, you can see that we're steadily closing that gap and increasing. So we want to see these numbers going up. The main point I'd like to make on this screen is very interesting. If you look at the 21-22 data set versus the 22-23, remember last year, 22-23, we implemented a brand-new core program for ELA CKLA. Typically, when you implement a new program, there is a tremendous amount of learning. And typically, you're going to see a pretty significant dip in your data sets. When you look at these and dive in, our data sets are holding to last year, if not improving in a few areas, which is, we have to give a tremendous thanks to our coaches and our teachers who implemented this program and worked their tails off to do so. It's not easy to do to put a new program in place and not see a dip. I anticipate that over the next couple of years, we're going to start seeing this really jump up as our core program really takes hold and our teachers get comfortable with it. But that's kind of what's going on in this screen. I'm going to switch now. Now you have to reverse your thinking. So we're still talking literacy, but we're talking about our tier-three kids. We're talking about the kids that are in the red, struggling the most. So let's go back to that kindergarten example. In fall of 21, 62% of our students would qualify for what would be considered tier three or high-level need of closing a gap, and we reduced it to 48%. So on this screen, what you're looking for each year is you want to see this decrease across the way. So you want to see from fall to spring a significant drop. That means we're closing the gap and we're shrinking our tier threes. And again, you can see some of those similarities. And again, what's interesting, we're looking at third and fourth grade. We're not seeing the growth as much there. We anticipate that is likely because a lot of our students received a new program in third and fourth grade that they didn't have in K2. And so now that they've had this program and we're closing that over the next couple of years, we do anticipate we're going to see some growth there in third and fourth grade as well, so shrinking that even more. That was ELA. I'm going to now switch gears again to math, just to kind of give you a big picture. Now we're back to tier-one math. Again, you can see the trend here. We do a really good job of, students are coming in pretty low, and we're making some gains there. We can attribute that to a program we've had in place and Nick Scholes's leadership in really getting that program honed in and our teachers using the program well. We're starting to see some really big gains there in our tier-one math program. Our tier two, your tier three, you're also seeing some reductions there. Again, we don't see the gap closing in much, as much in third and fourth grade. That's likely due to some of the resources or lack of resources we have at that level for math, because so much is put into reading first. And so we're trying to find ways of how we can balance reading and math, but not take away from the literacy instruction. But again, these are all works in progress. We're seeing the, the needle is starting to shift. I anticipate over the next couple of years, we're really going to see some tremendous growth now that things are really aligned. Our staff is trained and we got a couple of years under our belt. Okay, I just threw a lot at you guys. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you. This is extremely helpful and it's positive. It's really positive to see that things are going in the right direction. The one question that I have is, so I assume that the reason that when we were looking at the UPK stuff, that you're kind of changing some of the English Language Arts is to work on that 17% that we just saw.
Exactly.
Which is great. Do you envision something similar happening for mathematics to be able to get people to a higher functioning level at kindergarten?
You read my mind. That's the next year, following your goal. So I can only do one at a time, and our teachers can do, but yep, that's the next one. If math follows it one year, yep.
That's, that's great. And I know you all are doing really hard work, so I appreciate it, but that's great to know. Thanks.
Good, absolutely. Any other questions?
I'm going to have a few tonight. That's what I volunteer for. You're using webs, right?
AIMS web?
Yeah. I look at state. I look at state testing and because that's what we're compared to. We're compared to Buffalo. We're compared to Syracuse. And I know it's not in yet, but as soon as it comes in, this board needs to see a presentation on that testing. Because this is all right for you, but it's not all right for me. I'm going to ask you to do some work for me, and you've got a couple of months. But I want to know the number of staff in each building on AIS, the number of students receiving AIS reading. I want to know the number of taking AIS math, and that's what I would like. My other concern is, and I brought this up again, 1980, 1980 to 90, we had math people in elementary. And the program was so successful that I lost my job as a math person because we worked on that. I still believe that AIS reading teachers, I love them dearly, and I talked to one today, are wonderful. But we need math people with strong math background in our elementary schools. And I know, again, that's a wish that I would love, but it's something that could move this district forward. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. So one last one. I'm going to shift gears now to ELA. So we're shifting to pre-K through 12 English Language Arts, giving you just a big-picture overview of what's going on. This ties directly to goal two of our strategic plan. So as I've already spoke to and mentioned, we are adopting CKLA at the UPK, so that's going to be a big shift for us. Like I've already mentioned also, K4, we're in year two of CKLA. And as, as I mentioned, I want to go a little deeper on. This year is really going to be about that instructional planning element. So taking this program and really making it your own, bringing in your teacher craft, still staying with the program, but really teaching our teachers, you know, how you bring in those other things, how you really make it come alive. And so there's going to be a lot of training around instructional planning and a lot of support around that. As the board is aware, in grades five through eight, we have adopted EL Education Language Arts as our core program for grades five through eight. What I'm really excited about is, so at K4, the CKLA program is, is very much a skills-based program at K2, which is exactly as it should be, kind of transitions into readers and smaller books of reading. When you enter grades five through eight, EL Education is a novel-based approach. And so now our students are going to be shifting into novels, like full-on real novels, real high interest for our students. And the program takes a standards-based approach and goes very deeply into each novel, teaching the skills and the standards within that. So we're really excited to be launching that, and I think it's going to complement CKLA really well and build upon that strong foundation into hopefully some students who really enjoy reading. Some of the books I've been reading all of the summer, or all the, all the books that our students are going to read. I can tell you, there's some great books in there that they're going to find really interesting. More importantly, our teacher's going to have what they need and a strong foundation with assessments in there as well. So lots coming on that, and I'll report back as we progress across the year. In grades nine through 12, our nine-time teachers are working diligently right now in our ELA department on the Next Generation Learning Standards. We're updating our mid and final exams to be fully aligned and into e-doctrina. And we're next going to be working on common assessments there. Grades 11 and 12 follow that next school year. And then finally, I just wanted to also share some of our Regents Assessment scores. And, and I want to show you what you're looking at here. So I went back, let's see, one, two, three, four, five-ish years, six years. Because COVID really, that COVID year, the 2020-21 year, both of those years are really, we shouldn't even look at that data. It's so screwy with what happened with testing there. So I wanted to show the board a little bit of what our ELA Regents proficiency looks like. And when you go back to 17 and 18, you can see we're around the 91% mark in comparison to the state. We usually perform 10% or more higher than the state. Take out that COVID, the 2020, 2020, 2021 school year, and we're performing back at that 92% mark. I don't have the state data in yet for the school year. I had hoped it would be here in time for the board meeting, but that's not in yet. We anticipate it's going to be similar to last year, but of course, I don't know until that comes in. But we are working at the high school level. Like I said, we're adding common assessments. We're going to be talking about up there what we can do next. But you can see, we perform well in our high school regions. And right now, the next step is, so how do we make it even better? And how do, how do we raise those scores even further in a really high-performing department? Okay, so any questions on ELA?
What's proficiency considered 70 or?
I think it's 65. I'm not, I'd have to go back and check. I don't want, don't quote me on that. Good question.
The, the passing is 65.
65? Okay.
But thank you for pointing out the Regents, because at the end of the day, that's what we're doing. That's the high school credit that leads to the graduation, and we're trying to increase graduation rates. So I mean, I think that's an important piece to look at. You know, when you're taught, when you talk about the 4'8" testing, I still think we need to finish on the high school Regents credit, because that's the goal here. And I'm still not convinced they're all aligned. That's all. But I say that all the time.
Well, and what's really, we were just talking about this yesterday, and I don't know if you're aware of it, but it's really interesting. So at grades three through eight, we do computer-based testing. So we have to teach our youngest students how to not only handwrite and form letters and write sentences, but how to use a keyboard and type. And then they have to take their assessments on a computer. And then when you get to the high school, it's not computer-based for the Regents. It's handwritten. So it gets kind of backwards, but that's one of the major frustrations of some of our teachers as well. Any other questions?
Okay.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Hey, we're going to move to the public, public comment portion of the meeting. As always, I'll read the rules here. Our Board of Education meetings are meetings that are held in public. People are welcome to attend and observe. Here in North Syracuse, we do set aside a period of time for comments related to matters that involve the district. Period of time doesn't exceed 30 minutes, so we limit it to 10 speakers at three minutes each. And as always, the Board of Education does not engage in conversation. We simply listen. And when answers are required, they will be provided in writing at a later time. And please, as always, if you have something in writing, leave it with the board clerk here. Issues involving a particular student or employer are not permissible topics. I mentioned that again the last time, because we, I did have a problem with that, and that was my fault for not stopping it. So please, again, anything involving a person who's an employee or a student, it's not permissible to mention that. So one speaker, three minutes each. And all remarks are addressed to, you know, to the person presiding here, which would be me and the Board of Education. So having said that, I'll go down to my list, and we'll begin with Nick Edwards. So Nick, if he's here, can come forward. Thank you.
Hi, how you doing tonight?
Good.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Good. Okay, you're listening. I got to modify my thing up a little bit. I don't want to fall outside of your guidelines. So where I left off a month ago, okay? School staff members came up here. People that are social workers, faculty, women in the district.
Just hang on, it's just a minute, because see, you can't mention staff. And you mentioned a social worker. We had to speak, and now it's going to identify the person. I'm a little gun-shy, because I let it go, and I had some feedback on that. I was wrong, so I just caution you when you go that way.
Right, I got it.
Right, because everybody, I mean, this is, everybody has the right to free speech. So I don't want you to target somebody who didn't hear and spoke in public session just because they were staff.
If you let me go, can we restart my time?
Just because I'm the one who's going to hear about it.
Okay.
And I did.
Tell her to call me.
No, 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 that's my job that you don't go there. So like I said, if I'm being gun-shy, I apologize, because you didn't get there yet. Last time, I didn't think you were going there. I held back, and then you did go there. You named, you didn't name a person, but you specifically described a person, their position, and that they spoke and they were identified.
Okay.
By the.
There, there were staff.
We can't do that.
There's staff. Can we restart my three minutes?
Right, where do you start the three minutes? Because I took one and a half of them. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So I'm gonna go.
I'm just.
I'm going to go one and a half over. So staff members came up here. And they lied. They blatantly lied. They're manipulated statistics and just lies. Okay. And they did it to you guys. I can't imagine any business company anywhere in the world. Somebody could go to their board of directors and lie to get their way. And multiple staff members did it, but here's the problem. And here's what worried me. This is why it stuck with me. I usually let things go. I'm very laid back. Okay. To have the insane notion to tell parents that, oh, if you don't agree with us, you need to change your way of thinking. That's not freedom of thought or speech. You just brought up freedom of speech. Okay. But what the hell are they saying to the kids? I, I dealt with social workers when I was in school. Okay. Those are locked rooms, no windows. You're sitting in there with this person. And you know what? You're vulnerable when you go in there. So now we have staff members that lie to their bosses. They push their own agendas. And there's no repercussions. There's no protection to the students. That's dangerous. Okay. Now, do, 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 danger to the students. Okay. But, okay, hold on. Took a little wind out of my sail here. Okay. She isn't alone. All right. I, I, they're not alone. Okay. I, I've talked to a lot of teachers. We have teachers in every building. Okay. Some have contacted me with anonymity. They don't want their names brought out, but they're letting the parents know what's going on. And they're scared. Okay. They don't agree with whatever policy we're covering. They don't agree with the trainings they're being sent to. One of the teachers is elementary teacher. They want more trainings on how to educate the kids. So it's so great. We just had the speech about that. But what about the students that fear retaliation? I talked to two students in the past month. They are afraid of being retaliated against by the people that they're there to protect them. The kids are afraid of staff. Other staff members are afraid of staff members. The board is aware of this. And again, you guys are doing nothing. All right. Something has to break. Something has to change. And the only bright spot in all of this is that this board only has eleven months left. We're changing it. And it sucks because I don't want to be up there. But I feel like I need to be up there. Other parents need to be up here. You guys are controlled by the unions. All right. You do what the union tells you or what your wife tells you to do. That's not right. What's the protection for the students and the parents from these extremist activist staff members? Did you put any thought of that into your policy? I certainly wouldn't come into the school as a teacher and start preaching the Bible.
Thank you.
Okay. Now that we engaged, can we all agree?
What's the three minutes? When you did get the extra start, restart.
Did I get that?
Yeah.
Oh, son of a gun.
Cause I took some time and.
We're good.
Yeah. He, she, he reset, she reset.
She's a sweetheart.
She is.
Okay.
So thank you.
I'll see you in a couple weeks.
Yep. Jessica Soulier.
The definition of safe is protected from, not exposed to danger or risk and not likely to be harmed. When I was a kid, I loved being in school. It was a literal safe haven for me. School days provided me with much more than classes and the ability to perform in a few plays. I loved it. My teachers and the food. I hated summer vacation. And I was a kid that oftentimes would be down the principal's office and nurses or guidance, and they'd be asking questions and performing body checks on me and my siblings. They were truly doing their part in making sure we were safe at home. I love school. I felt safe and school stepped in many times and helped us. Home for me was a different story. When I was a kid, in many ways, school was my protector. I needed it. And I know firsthand the importance of feeling safe and the protection from schools. So know that when I speak, it comes from a heartfelt place and hate is a burden that I do not carry. However, just because there is an unfortunate absence in some families of strong foundational involved, healthy parents does not mean you take the place of the ones that are. Fast forward to ten years and schools become something very different. It's confusing for kids or kids are questioning things they never even thought before. Don't bully signs hang in all schools, yet when you report bullying, it almost goes unnoticed. Students no longer respect adults or teachers. The flag is taken down and others are put in its place. There's lack of standing for the pledge of allegiance with your hand on your heart. Everyone is accepted, always leaves many children out, and accept me has turned to affirm me. A child that isn't overly sexual or wears their sexual preference on their shirt is not, or is not sexually active, gets bullied and made fun of by simply having higher standards and morals and good examples at home. Sexual identity and orientation are the hyper focus in schools and nowhere else. Parents are having to be overly involved just to be proactive. Our children are exposed to things that we never thought would happen in our schools, yet adults are rallying for their agendas to be pushed over children. The last place you want your child is the principal's office, the nurse or with the counselor. School report courts are, are on the decline. Math proficiency in our district is forty five versus fifty six statewide. Reading is fifty percent versus sixty three statewide. Children are not getting smarter and parents are being made to look dumber. Many of our kids are desperately searching where to fit in. They are lost, confused, anxious, depressed, socially awkward, and just wish all this stuff could go away and school would just be school again. Yet here are adults trying to add more to the mix to really push our kids and families over the edge. Let's quietly pass along a policy that would create such a separation between parent and children and play parents against the schools. Pass policy five through one, one, eight, and all this will go away and all will be better. Again, just some parents are lacking and not leading their children as they should does not mean the school steps in for parents. What does it say to the other kids or to the kids that are not gender confused? Kids that haven't stepped out and said, I am this or that. You have to accept and affirm, affirm me. Kids that just come to school to learn and get out and they're there. Where are their needs for being safe and comfortable? Are they not valid? I can assure you, kids don't feel safe, protected, not exposed to danger or at risk. They absolutely don't feel like they cannot be harmed at school. I do believe that you're trying to do what you think is right and fair, but I urge you to please sit back and think and be the adults. Be the ones who see the bigger picture, look for the student's future and decide what we want to put our focus and tax dollars on. We are currently doing is not providing a safe, nurturing and productive space for all students. When our kids and students look back, what do you as a district want to be remembered for? Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Emily Soulier.
I'm a graduate of the class of twenty twenty one from CNS. And since policy five, three, one, one point eight has been passed, there have been many meetings where there were taxpayers, parents and students that have spoken about this topic and nothing has been done or said from the Board of Education. This tells me that the board, one, does not care for what we have to say, or two, they don't really care about the student's safety. Time and time again, this policy is proven to ruin lives, yet our Board of Education stays silent and will remain silent until something terrible happens. Students are now coming back with lawsuits and asking where the adults were to protect them. Does CNS really want to be a part of that? We're now going to start seeing the after effects of decisions like this one. Putting two opposite genders behind closed doors is unsafe and irresponsible. So I will ask you all again, what is it going to take for you to understand that this policy is not safe? How is it that a panel of adults can think that this is a good situation? A nine year old little girl should not have to share a bathroom with a twelve year old boy. Keeping this policy in place is just asking for someone to abuse it. Why would you keep a policy in place when you know it can harm students? We have seen policies just like this get abused and students have to suffer. As the Board of Education, your main goal should be to create a safe space for all students. You're supposed to help create an open and welcoming environment that helps students grow. Yes, this policy creates a way for gender fluid students to use a gender bathroom they identify with. But what about the other thousands of kids who are not comfortable with being in a restroom with someone of the opposite gender? I know I'm not comfortable with that. You're forcing students to conform to this agenda and you aren't listening to those that are speaking up for them. This policy creates room for error and it's not acceptable. Girls aren't using the bathroom in schools and are holding their pee all day long and having multiple UTIs, which is causing long-term medical effects. Girls are not comfortable with this. And what we just saw on the news today, in order to accommodate for the gender fluid people or those who are identifying as a different gender than the one assigned at birth, girls are changing in janitor's closets. This is absolutely ridiculous. This is going to start happening in our school. If we don't find a solution, what is best and safe for all students? My younger brother is not comfortable with this and I'm concerned for his safety. We're taught to have respect for our bodies and to be modest. Our bodies are not just a free for all for anyone to see. Now all of a sudden we're intolerant and hateful? We need to come up with a solution to this problem. Instead of forcing students to embrace the opposite gender in the bathroom, it'd be wise to make a bathroom for those that are gender fluid. So they can have a safe place to use the restroom. And so we're not supporting error by any given person. All I ask is that you think of the student's safety and not this agenda that you're pushing on them.
Thank you. Hey, Heather Calabria.
Good evening. Not get my printer to work, so bear with me. We are engaged in the sacred cause of education and we are entitled to look upon all parents as having a hostage to our cause. That is a quote by Howard Mann that developed the Department of Education in the United States. It was always and is a direct threat to children and parents of indoctrination. It is written in your ultimate agenda. Last week you stated you were here for the children and made a point of saying that. I would really like to articulate what that really means to you, um, and what you are really here for. You've consistently followed the mantra above, which is, which is not for the children, but for the money. You consistently mandate and follow the government in, in vaccines while we know we have now have one in two children that will be autistic in the next ten years. And we currently have one in four children on antidepressants and many more on ADHD meds. That would be for the money, not for the children. Vaccines were stated in nineteen eighty six legislation that they were inherently and unavoidably unsafe. But we follow a mantra, they are safe and effective while ignoring the neurotoxic ingredients and other species derivatives. Since the, with that, they have seventy two doses of toxic shots to children, and now we have the unhealthiest children in the world with the most chronic disease. That would be for the money, not the children. You close schools with the, um, maybe, sorry, having a paper is a little challenging. You close schools, distant children and masked children when there was never any risk to children and promoted a known bioweapon. We are now trying to normalize adult death syndrome and myocarditis in children. That is for the money, not the children. You teach children that CO2 is bad for them while forcing them to breathe in their own CO2. That is surely not the benefit of the children as without CO2, there is no plants. And if there is no plants, there is no humans or children. While I'm glad that you are looking into farm fresh food, you dictate money for children, the schools for lunches, saying it is for the children. But I think it's more for money. You follow gender policies that. You found, um, well, I'm, okay, I'm sorry. You follow gender policies that are destructive, unsafe and unhealthy for the money, not for the children. We should not be changing science and God given nature to suit someone's feelings. It, it is the New York State government that also just changed, charged Bayer, the maker of Roundup, nine point eight million dollars for misleading consumers on the health risks of active ingredients, glyphosate and Roundup. While you will now see commercials on the TV for the risks of cancer, you're all missing the actual most important thing of glyphosate. It's actually a hormone disruptor. I'm sorry, since I don't have this in paper, can I have another minute?
You, can you just wrap up with a couple of sentences? That's what we usually do.
Just want to say my mother raised two children, ten thousand dollars, and we never took any government funds. We have made a point to all have breakfast together, work hard. I brought my own lunch to school. I also worked four jobs while doing my whole biology degree in one year. We're missing that in school and kids today. We're missing the responsibility of oneself and the work ethic. My son who graduated in twenty and didn't have a proper education, actually, I'm proud he's not going to college because he actually owns his own business at twenty years old. He understands self determination and work ethic, and that's what our kids are missing today. Because we shouldn't have them on, being dependent on the government and on socialistic programs.
If you could just, anything in writing, if you could print that at another time and get it to the board clerk, if there's more you want us to read, we, we will read that.
All right. I'll print it next time.
Yep. Or you can get that to her later, email it. Thank you. David Monahan.
Oh, guess this is on, huh?
Yep.
Hello, hello, hello. All right. So the letter F, I'm going to start out with the letter F, just like Sesame Street, but I'm going to get back to that. All students matter. All lives matter, not just trans lives, not just black lives, not just gays' lives. As I have a gay son, so let's say I'm anti-gay. I'm not anti-gay. When it comes to education and the nation, I'm old school, saying the pledge of allegiance. Standing up for the national anthem, putting my hand over my heart, tearing up at the sound of taps. And I have personally witnessed during past meetings of one representative of this board that doesn't say the pledge of allegiance. I find that really disgusting. Now that should be requirement of this board and should be grounds for dismissal. The past school year, North Syracuse Central School District, the math proficiency is forty five percent. I believe that's an F. Reading proficiency, fifty percent. I believe that's an F. And I'm glad there were six hundred and four graduates. That's fantastic. However, how many of those graduates are able to read at the twelfth grade reading level or higher? So I would like to have an answer to that question. How many students are actually proficient in math? I would like the answer to that question. As far as I'm concerned, the primary duty of the Board of Education Superintendent, and I ran for the Board of Education. The primary duty is to educate the children in this district. So as far as I'm concerned, the board and superintendent get an F. Concerning questions that I submitted back in July, I did receive responses from the president. But I'm not satisfied with those answers because I wanted specifics about what is broken in the system. What's causing low proficiency in math? What's causing low proficiency in reading? You should know those answers. I used to be a teacher. I knew the answers. I knew why kids were doing poorly in earth science and I tried to fix it. And I believe that on this board currently is there's conflict of interest. There, there's actually a board member on this board whose spouse is a member of the NSCA and is an officer of the NSCA. As far as I'm concerned, that's a conflict of interest. Because that individual votes for the annual budget, which is teacher pay, teacher salary, teacher's benefits. There's also another member on this board who's a current member of the NSCA. As far as I'm concerned, that's a conflict of interest. Because you vote for teacher salaries and pay and benefits. My goal and on May fourteenth, twenty twenty four is I'm not going to run for board. But my goal is to, there's three people up for that are going to be up for reelection next year. And my goal, my goal, uh, one of my primary goals, not my ultimate one, is to make sure that you're not sitting on the board July first of twenty twenty four. And there's other individuals back here that feel the same way.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, superintendent's comments, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you, Mr. Carfallia. Um, first thing I want to let people know is that last week, we hosted an event for Micron and there was a community forum. And I want to tell everyone that, um, Micron, uh, Ryan McMahon, uh, who was present, uh, really was impressed with the facilities, with all of the people that were involved. Um, and they said the, the team at North Syracuse, but I want to point out a specific member of that team or members of that team. And that were our students. We have students that are part of, uh, four D production that, um, really do a, an outstanding job with the sound, the microphones and all the aspects of making a presentation. And, uh, they were really impressed with our students. So I want to at least say, uh, we were really impressed and so were they. Other comments from this past week were, um, we've had a summer program with the Twenty First Century Grant that has been down at Rocks and we had the opportunity to, to take a look and see what they've done for students in their summer program. And, uh, they, um, put on some different, uh, programs for us and different presentations. And again, for the students and the parents that were there, um, it's nice to make sure that our students are engaged and involved in the summer. Those are the two, uh, big things that have happened this past week. And, um, again, we will be, because we're a large district hosting another event um, at our junior high, because again, people are noticing and that's the state DOT, uh, meeting, uh, about Route eighty one. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Bowles. Board of Education comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowles. Board of Education comments? Mr. Ludden?
Yeah, I'd like to say a couple of things. One, thanks Greg for coming this week and we also had Nick. Well, I guess it was two weeks ago, not last week, but I think it was very encouraging to see that there are positive trends in both math and ELA scores. As we saw from, of course, as you know, everybody here knows that from COVID, things went down quite a bit. And now that we're back to complete, you know, in-person instruction and it, you know, I want to congratulate you and Nick and everybody else who's been doing a great job to try to rebound those scores. Obviously, as my colleague Bob over there said, there certainly is still room to grow. So I look forward to seeing that happen. And hopefully we can continue to provide resources, but I'm very happy that we're trending in the right direction. So thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Crabtree.
Piggyback.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Probably will.
I hope so.
Depends on what you think.
I'm with. Mr. Farfalia, myself, we attended last weekend, a leadership and education event hosted by the New York School Boards Association. And Paul and I went to a lot of general sessions together, but what we did is we split up so that we got to go to all the sessions. I first want to say that Lisa Goldberg represented our school. I sent something to Mr. Bowles about it, talking about the well-being of our students and how we went through a very difficult time when Dan first came on with social and losing a few of our students and so forth. She did a great job and we should be very proud, Dan, of what she did for our school district. The ones I attended were dealing with the learning gap because of COVID and two separate districts and Lisa's got the names of these people and because they sat with us at lunch, one of them did, right Paul? And so we've got that information on that. But the one that really struck me is the substance abuse in this, in this country, in this state and in our schools. I was very astounded the number of young people that are overdosing and what we need to start doing so that this doesn't happen. Very interesting, very, very interesting, but discouraging to, to me. And the last one that I went to that Paul didn't, and he went to one somewhat like, and I've been saying this on this board, elevating student voices. Amazing what is happening in some of our school districts in New York State where students actually have voice in faculty meetings, at Board of Education meetings. I know we work with Albany Bosse's, but they have a special program and I'll be talking to Dr. Cook about doing this through Bosse's, where all the school districts around Albany send students. And they talk about what's happening in their high schools, what's the same, what's different? Think of us working with Tully or think of us working with like Beeville does. Beeville students work with Corcoran. There's a committee where they see what happens in our city, what happens out in Barnesville. And then when the lady or when the student, and students led this, amazing students, asked how many school boards have a student on their school board? Almost every hand went up in that room. Come on, North Syracuse, we passed it and we need to get somebody on the sport. I am embarrassed that Beeville already has somebody. JD already has somebody. I want on the website and we still don't have anybody. I'm only a single board member. I can't do it all. I've talked to Mr. Bowles about this and I'm still waiting. We need a student voice on this board. Thank you.
Okay, and just, just to piggyback on that, we, I did go to the NISBA Leadership and Education Conference is what they called it. It's the second year they've done that. It's it's interesting because you, and I know people work and the schedules are tough, but I encourage you to look at that, what NISBA does offer. Because you're able to network with other school boards who are really handling the same kind of topics that we are. I think everybody here received the short, brief thing that I wrote up. I think it ended up being five pages. I don't count it. I just keep going, but if you have any questions about anything I took notes on, please feel free to bring it up at any time. As Bob said, a lot of great topics when he was at the one for student voice. I went to one and they kind of paralleled two that I went to were about recruitment and staff retention, which is a big growing concern for districts all across the state. And they were very interesting. You'll see my comments on those pieces and what I had sent you. So other than that, I'll just echo what he said about Lisa Goldberg, who's proud to have somebody, one of our own there. She was a star. She's just fantastic wherever she goes. So, thank you. Sure.
We are way ahead in this district in restorative practices. I want you to know that. Our staff is way ahead. When we listen, when we go to this, we talk to people and they're just starting restorative practices. Lisa's been doing this for years here and so we should be very proud of restorative practices in this district.
No, thank you for bringing that up because that's an important piece that's in what I wrote, but it's good to have that stated publicly. And when you're listening to what other districts are doing or what they're recommending that we do, we're already doing it and we've been doing it. So, thank you. Other comments? Seeing that, I'll move on to routine action items and ask for a motion for the approval of the minutes of the July twenty-fourth meeting. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Thorne. Any questions, discussions on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. And if I get a motion, I would group B, C and D together. Motion from Mr. Maurizio, second from Mr. Ludden. B, C and D are the classification and placement of the disabled students for preschool, in-school and home instruction by the various committees. So those three are before us. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. Discussion action items, A, a motion, please place that before, says approval extension to the two thousand nineteen to twenty-three contract with the district and the bus engineers. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Ms. Segrew. That is before us. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Posed and that is carried. Thank you. And marketable and non-marketable surplus declaration, a motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Ludden. That is before us. Everything there was non-marketable. Yeah. Any questions? Okay, discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Posed and that is carried. And C, resolution to create a licensed practical nurse at the North Syracuse Junior High, motion from Mr. Ludden, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed and that is carried. And a resolution created one-point-oh, a point-one, sorry. FTE teacher on special assignment math. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Dr. Kramer. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions on this one. Um, first, this is going to be a current, and I guess this is probably for Dan or Jason, but this is a a current teacher that is in the district already that is going to get additional responsibilities? Okay. If you could just explain a little bit, I was confused on when I was reading it earlier.
This is to support math initiatives and it happens during the regular workday. So it's unlikely one of our existing staff members will be able to do that or that would want to resign a full-time job to take a point-one because it's at the same time as their regular job. So we'll be most likely looking for somebody outside of our regular staff to join in to support that program.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. I just was confused on how we were working that. But that clears it up. Thank you.
Yep. Other questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed and that is carried. Thank you. A resolution to create athletic coaching positions attached. Motion, please place that before, motion from Mr. Segrew, second from Mr. Thorne. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed and that is carried. And resolution to create teacher positions at R W Siley Bear Road Elementary and Roxboro Road Elementary. This is resolution F, motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Crabtree.
I'd just like to comment.
Yep.
Thank you to Mr. Leahy. Thank you to Mr. Bowles. Because we've been watching the, the two grade levels and there were too many students and in each of those grades and the smaller class size, I tell you people, makes a big difference. So I'm thankful. However, I'm watching another one.
Other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Posed, thank you, that is carried. And resolution to increase food service, service substitute hourly rate, resolution, motion from Ms. Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Herman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed and that is carried. And a motion, please, for the appointment of compliance officer. Motion from Mr. Ludden, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed and that is carried. And retirement to acknowledge? We have Jill. Is that Malias? Milias, thank you. Physical education teacher with twenty-eight-point-two years of service. Matina Stereo, Spanish teacher with twenty-seven years of service and Judith Sprague, account clerk two. Retiring with thirty-six-point-eight years of service. So thank you to them for their service and it's a lot of service. And I wish them a long and healthy retirement on their upcoming retirement date. Instructional personnel report A, a motion, please, that before us, please. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Thorne. A is before us. Any questions there? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed and instructional report A is accepted. Support staff personnel report B, please, a motion, please, that before us. Motion from Mr. Ludden, second from Mr. Crabtree.
I would like to say something about this one.
Yep. It's before.
Which you already mentioned, but I've known her a long time and that's Judy Sprague. She has worked for this school district way before Mr. Keegan was here in the business office. At one time she was in charge of all of the health insurance in the district for retired people like me. And she did a marvelous job. I have come into board meetings at quarter of six. She's leaving. She puts a lot of time and a lot of extra effort. She is a north star. She loves this district, even though she doesn't live in it. She lives in another district, I tell her that. But she loved this district and she loved her job and she worked very hard.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Okay, support personnel staff B is before us, all in favor? Posed and that is carried. An administrative personnel report C, a motion, please, that before us, motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Thorne. That is before us. Any questions, concerns? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make a comment. It was great meeting Heather today and I think that she's gonna do a great job and I want to say to Jason and Dan and everybody else involved. I'm really happy with a lot of our new administrators and I think you're making the school, the district go in a great direction. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. Congratulations, Ms. Pellegrino. Thank you. This time I'll make a motion for executive session, ask for a second. This will be for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with the middle managers bargaining unit with no action to follow. To review two personnel matters with no action to follow and to hold a Board of Education workshop. Can I get a second? Second from Mr. Maurizio. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed and a motion for adjournment, please. Motion, Ms. Maurizio, second from Mr. Ludden. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, we are adjourned, seven oh-two. Thank you.